Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our special meeting on our strategic plan. And I just want to call this meeting in order, and I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to our city manager.
Sure, thank you. I'll look first to the clerk. Madam clerk, do you need a roll call or are you good?
Madam clerk, please hold a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Mayor Proton Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Rist.
On the way.
Thank you.
So, good morning, council. Beau Ferguson, city manager. It's great to be with you this morning. As a number of you commented on your way in, there is a lot going on. You've got a lot going on in your lives, a lot of layers. At least two of you were in a different state this time yesterday and maybe even this morning. A lot of things in personal lives, a lot of things in our state and federal climate that we're all talking about, lots of headlines that are, I know, taking up a lot of attention. I invite you all to put that aside for the next three hours. Because, in my humble opinion, you guys should be really excited about what you're about to do. You all ran for your seats on council or sought your seats on council because you had aspirations, you had big ideas, you had agendas that you wanted to pursue, and all of that passion you brought with you to this council. But as you express with me from time to time, the daily grind of running a government, the stuff that we do when we sit in this room and we're down in the chambers and the time in between, with all of that on your plates, it can be really hard to find time to talk about those things that inspired you to run for council and to sit at that dais. I know that all those things we talk about, the daily grind, the work that we do every day, is really important. Really important that we get all that work done. But as we do that work, I think it's important to ask the question, what's the roadmap that we're following? What are the routes that we're going to follow to get where we're trying to go? And what are the milestones along that route that we will use to know that we've achieved what we wanted to achieve? That is the work of strategic planning. Council, let me remind you that you have 2,600 employees. You just adopted a $772 million budget. You have vast resources at your disposal, but you also have a community with a wide range of needs and expectations. All the resources that are at your disposal can help move our community forward, but the big community shaping decisions about how we use those resources really start here. The work that you will do today and that will continue out in the community and with the staff over the next several months and into the spring, that work will build out a plan that we will use to apply all those resources at your disposal to advance the agenda of the city. My commitment to you as a council is that we will follow the plan that you eventually adopt at the end of this process. It will be central to budgets that I present to you in the future. It will be front and center of the work plan of the departments that sit and are represented in this room today, and it will be the framework that we use to gauge all of our collective success. So, these three hours this morning, start that work, and I'm excited to see how you're about to level up Durham. I'd like to turn it over to Sheri, who is going to walk you through the process and introduce the day for you.
Thank you. Good morning. So, I'm Sheri Metcalf from Budget Management Services, and welcome to the first step of the first phase of developing this plan today. So, today, we are all about big goals. We're all about your priorities, and there's going to be, at the end of this meeting, a whole lot of writing and post-it notes all over the room. And the plan is to take all of that, which will lead us, the staff, into the next step, which is going out into our residents and engaging with the community. And then, we all come back together, this group again, in February, where we do part two of today's meeting, where we finalize those goals and those priorities to create that structure and framework for the strategic plan. And once we have that framework, then the city manager and the folks behind me get to work creating those action items and those initiatives, which we will all then come back together again in May and share that proposed strategic plan with you all. So, we have time. It's a step-by-step process, so we're excited about today and see what we get at the end of it. You all have some lavender sheets in front of you. Those sheets are the current structure. It is some past priority areas as well and past strategic plans. Today, we really want to focus on the future and what's happening tomorrow and onward, but it's there for as a reference, if you want to take a look at it. And with that, I am going to hand this over to the A-team over here. You all have met at least one, if not two, of them already as part of your phone conversations a couple of weeks ago, but we have Warren Miller, who is president and senior consultant of Fountain Works. He is joined by Danielle Bedaki, who is a senior project manager, and also Victor Nieto is a project manager as well. So, I'm going to hand you over to their very capable hands to get started today. Thank you.
Got it? There you go. How are you all doing? Good. We're super glad to be here, super glad to get started with you all. As she mentioned, I've talked to pretty much every one of you, so nice to see you. And real, put the voices to the faces. Good to see you guys all again. Today, we really want to get started, and we're going to start with walking you through our agenda and what these posted notes, what all these papers mean, right? What's going to go on here today? Yeah. So, of course, we started with our breakfast, so everyone should be eating, feeling good, energized, to get started through the day. And then, I'm going to lead us through an icebreaker. Hopefully, this is a way just to get our blood pumping, have some conversations, start going. Then, we're going to very briefly touch on the strategic planning process, walk through really specifically the strategic terms that we're going to be using throughout this day. We're going to have staff share a little bit of what we've done in the past as well. And then, we'll begin and start into our strategic plan goals. So, here, we're really going to focus on the goals, what these mean, what these mean to you, maybe speak a little bit around language. We'll have some station activities that we'll explain further. And then, we'll be able to dive into our priorities. We'll talk a little about what these priorities are, where there's alignment, what you are hoping to see to guide the city of Durham for the next three years. And then, we will reflect, and we know you guys all have a work session after this. So, the goal is to get you all out by 12:00. Of course, breaks will be built in, and we're super excited. Any questions before we get started? All right. I also wanted to walk us through our outcomes very quickly, so it's over there, but we want to identify our strategic priorities to guide us for the next three years. So, as you heard from your city manager and from Sheri here, this is really the opportunity to share the areas that you want to see change, or maybe some areas that you want to see keep progressing for the city of Durham as you move forward for the next three years. These will guide us as we move forward, so we're here to really create alignment, some shared understanding, and give the staff some direction of where you want to go as a council. We'll also, as I mentioned, talk very briefly about the goals as well. We had some conversations around what these goals mean, possibly changing them, what they mean to you, and how we can ensure that we have some shared understanding of these goals as well. So, then, now we'll dive into our icebreaker. So, we have our fun. So, we have our super fun dice here. So, I'm going to pass this around, and the goal is, you're going to throw it. You can either toss it to someone, throw it to the ground, whatever the number it lands on, we're going to have you answer the respective question. And I'm sure you guys have one here, the respective question there as well. I can give it to someone, or anyone can volunteer to get started. Yeah?
Since you're making us really work this morning.
Just a little bit.
Gosh. All right, so if you could have any superpower to support Durham, what would it be? Wow. I would say, maybe because the moment we're in, every time someone speaks ill of someone else, they would feel like a little pinch. It's like, ouch, what's that? You know, just reminding them to just, you know, be kinder.
All right, I got number four. I should also say, years ago, my very first job ever at a college was teaching German, believe it or not. And so, to learn how to conjugate verbs, I had a ball like this, and I tossed it to the student in the class, and they'd get it, and then it'd be like, "I," or "you," whatever, conjugate verbs. So, it's a good exercise.
It's great, so you're familiar.
Brings me way back.
Familiar with the ball.
Way back. Okay, four.
Are we going to hear you speak in these rooms, man?
Ya voilà. You didn't think you were going to get this for this kind of retreat, right? Okay. What is a key benefit for residents of a well-done Durham? I talk about this a lot, but I think a key benefit is that we deliver services in an efficient, effective, and timely way for our residents. That's like, I think it's a huge benefit, and I want us to get better at that.
Ah, good catch.
I'm getting in trouble. Yeah, my mom would have killed me for that.
I got two. What accomplishment are you most proud of in your role as council member so far? Wow, I've been asked this question a lot of times recently. And I don't, maybe I don't know, but one thing I am proud of is that we had what I thought was a really awesome prioritization in our budget this year, and I was really proud that, of the top six things, that five of them were ones that I had put forward or had supported, so that was something that I am really proud of. One second.
What is a multi-generational legacy you want to see for Durham?
I think that a Durham where folks can actually, like, their quality of life is improved by our actions.
What accomplishment are you most proud of in your role as a council member so far? I'd say guaranteed income. I think the codification of guaranteed income and our colleagues agreeing on it, I think it's good social policy. I think when you stabilize folk at the front end of life, you don't have to spend as much on the back end, and as if I do, Sheri, of the city, that's important, you know, being good sewage resources also. Just saying, for me, it codifies a value of ours that there's not a line we're going to allow you to fall beneath by virtue of your humanity, notwithstanding where you work, who you are, what you look like, but it's just good social policy to stabilize human beings by virtue of their humanity, regardless of your status here in the nation, because we spend less money on the back end, so I would say that. Who wants this dice? My man.
Could say barbecue. I don't know. I think pizza, because there's so many different kinds of pizza. You were going to say pizza? Yeah. So many different kinds of pizzas, so many different kinds of ways of making it, so I'll go with pizza. I got the easy one.
I was saying, I thought about it because I'm a foodie, and I would say that it's the mac with the cheese, so I think that says a lot. Yeah. So many ways.
I love that. Did everyone, I think everyone went right? Well, thank you. I hope that was fun for you all this early morning.
Can we keep the die?
I mean, absolutely. Start every meeting like that, moving on. We'll leave the ice for your questions, too. So, thank you, guys. Thank you so much. This really was an opportunity for you all to get grounded. It seems fun, and we answered some fairly silly questions, but some a little bit more serious, an opportunity for you to reflect on your work as a council member, reflect on Durham and who you would like Durham to be, but also connecting to you a little bit to what you're passionate about, why Durham important to you, centering you a little bit on your why. Why are you serving Durham? What are you passionate about? What are the changes you want to make? So, for all the answers you shared and the very different ways, hold on to these as we begin to dive into the rest of our activities today. So, now, I'm going to pass it over to Warren, and he's going to lead us through our next activities.
Okay, good morning. So, we want to get grounded in some of the terms that we're going to be working with today, part of your strategic plan. So, this may be a repeat of what you already know, but just as we think about what we're going to be doing today, you have a strategic plan that is organized around goals and objectives and initiatives. And so, when you think about goals, when we talk about goals today, think of these as your overarching areas of focus that are going to help move you towards your vision. So, these are broad areas that you want to focus on, that you want to achieve. So, you have, in your current plan, you have five strategic goals, and those goals are shared economic prosperity, create safer community together, connected, engaged, and inclusive communities, innovative and high-performing organization, and then thriving and vibrant economy. So, when we think about goals here, we've got it up on the screen, we've got the shared economic prosperity as our example. What we're going to be doing today is, you're going to have a chance to look at those goals and decide if you want to keep them, tweak them, add to them, take something, modify them. So, that's one of the things that you'll be working on. And then, we're going to be asking you also, what are your priorities? And so, when we say priorities, so what are those things that the city needs to do to achieve your goals? What are your ideas that will help inform what we say your objectives for the next three years? And so, we'll be asking, all right, for this goal, what are the priorities that we want to work on? And so, think of these as three-year things that you want to do. Now, when you eventually define these priorities, they'll become objectives. So, there's a little bit of sort of language that we just want to make sure you're clear on. In your strategic plan, you have objectives. So, today, what we're doing is, we're going to be using and focusing on the term priority. So, just think of that as the big things that you want to do over the next three years to help you achieve those goals. So, to just, to make that clear, we gave the example. So, if your goal is shared economic prosperity, your priority might be something like, make our workforce better prepared for the job market. That would be an example of a priority. And so, when staff hears that as a priority, what they'll do is, they'll rework that into an objective statement for your plan, and we have the example here, build a talented, competitive workforce. Okay? So, think of it as the three-year idea that'll move you forward. Would it be helpful to pause here, take a question, Mayor? Oh, okay.
Sometimes I read with my finger, just going across. It's a bit far away for me.
Okay. All right. And then, what we won't be working on today are identifying initiatives. So, think of initiatives as specific programs, actions, steps, that will serve and help you achieve those priorities, those objectives. So, an example of initiative would be collaborate with educational and training institutions to equip current residents for high-growth industries. So, again, these are just examples, but what you're seeing is initiative is something much more specific. So, we're not working at that specific level today. We're looking, we're working at that higher level of the goals and the priorities. So, just getting you grounded, this may be, this may be just a refresher for you, but just want to check and just see if you have any question about these languages, because sometimes different words are used in strategic planning, you have different experiences. So, I'm going to pause and see any questions about these terms that we're going to be working with today. Yes?
I just, and it is a refresher. I feel like we see this all the time. I just have a hard time between two and three. They feel like they don't change. Make our workforce better prepared, and then build a talented, competitive workforce feels roughly the same to me. And I know that there's like, it kind of broadens out as it goes, so I'm wondering if you could just like, help me understand better, like, why we have that jump from two to three, like, what that space serves in our plan?
Yeah, and I may also call on Sheri to talk more, but for the purpose of today, we're going to be using and focusing on priorities, and then staff would turn that into an objective statement. So, it's really taking the same concept of a three-year effort that you want to work on to achieve a goal, and just reworking it into an objective statement. So, it's very similar, but we wanted to make sure that you understood that there are both of these elements, and that what ultimately gets in your plan down the road would be an objective. And Sheri, would it be anything that you want to add to this?
Is it fair to say this is like a mission and vision? You're like, there is an idea, then there's an action step? Because they are similar to.
They're very similar. We use objective, that's the term we use in the city in our strategic plan, but they're priorities. Like, it's easier when we go out to the community, we work with people, that's what it, it's a priority. And so, I know they're very similar. We could do away with, we could do away with objective and call them priorities. We're going to take your priorities and we might reword, you know, we'll add a verb, right, to kind of fit into that objective kind of formula that we use in the strategic plan, but they're your priorities. I know, we could get rid of the word objective and just use priorities. Does, is that fair?
I mean, it's pretty fuzzy, to be honest. I'm just being honest, like, I mean, why have priorities and objectives? They're the same. So, we need a little more clarity.
Yes. So, let's go with priorities, and yes, we'll defuzzy that and move, yeah. Does that work? We're all about priorities today. That's what we want to talk about. That's what's in the plan.
Yeah, I've fought this fight many, many. A symphony has four movements, and it just, just, just accept, and I know there's some language and nomenclature that's germane to this profession and stuff, and, you know, I would just say, college, just let them cook. There's a way they talk, so.
It is a little more city speak, I guess. We're all about priorities, though. That's what we're really looking for, for the plan. Does that answer the question? Or at least? Okay.
Well, just so, and again, our focus today, what you want from us is really goals and priorities.
Correct, yes.
We're not going to dive down into the objectives, that's going to be a staff sort of.
That's right. That's right. But we wanted to make sure, if you were looking at the plan, you say, well, wait, what about objectives or what about initiatives? We just want to make sure we explained how those do fit in. But yes, today is all about goals and all about priorities. And as Beau says, or City Manager said, this is your first opportunity to get a first draft of these that you'll be taking out to the community, so you'll have more opportunity today. Did you, anything you want to add or question?
Yeah, I just, it's basically, each layer is a more discrete task than the one below. That's it. It's like, if you're building a spreadsheet, you have a sub under a thing. That's all. It's just, right? So, it's a more targeted thing under a broader thing. That's all. And we're at the top, because that's where we live as policymakers.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm sure we've all done this a million times, too, so just being clear what these terms, how we're using the terms in this context is important.
Yeah. And so, think today, as you think about defining your goals and you think about setting priorities, think about those two examples, like, when you ask yourself, like, what level are we trying to get at? You've got those examples, shared economic prosperity is an example of a goal statement, and when you think about a priority, it's make our workforce better prepared for the job market. So, a little more step down. Okay. So, thank you for, thank you for going through that refresher, and what we want to do now, I'll turn it back over to you for the next segment and to get into the work.
All right. So, I'm glad that's clear. And just so you know, well, I'll explain the activity, and I think that should help us clear it up a little bit more. So, of course, as City Manager mentioned, and you all mentioned, there's a lot going on here today, right? What are these flip charts? Why do I have stickies? What's going on? So, the goal here, we, as you mentioned, we're right now, in this moment, going to focus on our goals. But first, we want you, could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you, sorry. So, first, we want you to think of your priorities. I've had several conversations with you all. Think of your big ideas that you want to drive to the city of Durham moving forward, and write these down on your big sticky notes. Let's have one per sticky note. So, your priorities are going to go on those big sticky notes, and it's going to be one per sticky note. So, you're going to write that down first.
Yeah, is this?
Priorities. Priorities.
Okay.
Your priorities.
Yes, so.
Yes, are these our priorities as persons and more like the goals on the structure, or are we looking at priorities, the secondary tier?
Yeah, we want you to, we wanted to introduce the framework, but right now, I want you to think about priorities. We'll come back to goals, and we'll see, but we want you to think about, what are those things that you think you want to move forward over the next three years? What are those priorities that you have? And we want you to write them on the big sticky note that you have, one priority per sticky note. So, you can write as many as you want. We'll give you some time to think about it, and then we'll give you your next instruction. So, what are the priorities across any areas of the city, any area that you want, that you're thinking about, that you want to put on the table?
Is it more helpful to frame these, is this like a noun or is this like a verb? Is it, and I don't know if that matters, but I'm just wanting to.
It would be helpful, if we go back to the previous, if you think about that example, so, would be a big idea, make our workforce better prepared. So, put a verb, I think that would be helpful. That's okay.
That's okay. And you also have these explanations in your handouts as well. I believe that's page two, so you can refer to that.
And so, one idea per big sticky note, as many as you'd like.
We'll give it about 30 or 30 more seconds, 45 more seconds.
Were you about to go on? You were about to say three minutes and then you went down to 30 seconds?
Oh, three minutes? No, I was going to stay in the second arena. A little bit more, okay. A little bit more. Checking in, how are we feeling? A few, couple more seconds or rounding up? I got one thumbs up. Two, okay. Wait for a couple more. All right, I think we're all good. Okay, so great. So what, the next activity, we have five stations, well, six stations, but five with each one representing your strategic goals. So you see here, there's five stations centered around, and then we have a what's missing? Flip chart here and there, I'll explain that further, I'll come back to that. So at each station, you're going to take your priorities with you and then place it at the respective station that you think it lands. You're going to leave it there and we'll just hold on to that and we'll come back to that. Next, you're going to answer the questions under each strategic goal. The first question is, what do we need to be doing more of, less of differently? This is just a snapshot of how we're doing on this goal right now. You're going to capture all of that on your small, on the small sticky notes. The second question is, do you have any specific changes to how this goal is worded? Again, capturing that on the small sticky note. So we're going to have seven stations, I'm, I'm sorry, seven minutes at each station. And we'll be timing and we'll tell you when to rotate. There'll also be staff members helping you at each station to walk you through this as well. So I say one more time because I'm seeing faces. So you're going to stand up, take these priorities with you, just place the priorities on the respective strategic goal that it lands. Then we're going to come back to that. Next, you're going to answer the questions and at this point, you're really focusing on the goals. So what do we need to be doing more of, less of differently? Snapshot, how are we doing on this goal? Second question, any specific changes to the, to the wording? What, maybe I'm not really comfortable about this wording, I want to change this a bit, add that information as well. All of this is going to be on your small sticky notes. Any questions?
So you'll be spending seven minutes per station. So if there is something that's missing, it's not covered by one of your goals. So we have a station back there. So maybe you feel like there needs to be, I have some priorities that don't fit under any of these. I'm going to put them at this station. Because what we're trying to do is understand if, is there a goal missing? Do you want to add something? So we've got some space for you to do that. So the most important thing is go ahead and, and spending seven minutes answering these questions, getting your priorities up there and writing down any feedback you have on these questions. And then we'll rotate around. So we'll just do this, this will be about.
Once they place their priorities, where do they, do you want them to all go to one station? Are they going to different stations? Are you assigning them the station?
So what, what would, what we'd like you to do is just get up and go to individual stations. So just to keep it a little simpler. So if we can have, we've got seven of you, so we've got five goals. Two of you will work together and just rotate around clockwise instead of moving around the room. And then just spend seven minutes at each station and we'll let you know when it's time to move.
The first thing, we're going to take all the, all the priorities.
All the priorities with you.
At any station, yeah.
Well, yeah, you're taking, so you're going to, you're, what, we'll just amend this slightly, but rather than have you move around the room and posting your priorities, let's just have you go to one station and put the priorities that relate to that. Then you'll move to the next, okay? Yeah, bring your small sticky note for those other questions.
Wanted to also mention, your handouts also share, if you need to remember what these goal areas mean, your handouts have that information on them as well, if you want to take that with you. And can we have our staff volunteers come up as well, please?
What's that? Yeah, just, well, no, just go to one station, that'll be easier, I think. That'll be easier, I think. Yeah. If you haven't moved yet to your next station, you should at least be on your second station right now. If you haven't moved yet to your next station, you should at least be on your second station right now. If you haven't moved yet to your next station, you should at least be on your second station right now. If you haven't moved yet to your next station, you should at least be on your second station right now. So you should be moving on to at least your third station. At least your third. So at this point, you should be moving on to at least your third station. At least your third. So you should be at the point where you're moving on to your final station. Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I know Carl just jumped out. We, we want to just do a quick debrief on this exercise. You, you had a chance to think about these five goals, the current goals you had. You had a chance to think about, how are we doing on these? Do we need to rework these? What are the priorities that we need to be focusing on over the next three years? So right now, before we get into sort of goal by goal and diving into it, we'll do that after the break. But just sort of overall takeaways as you've gone through this thinking exercise. Just open it up to you all.
Colleagues? Yeah, council member?
Yeah, I feel like a couple of the--
Yeah, I feel like a couple of these felt a bit restrictive and a couple of them felt too broad.
Okay.
And I had trouble, I think, finding where to put all of my things. And even after I placed them, I was like, well, maybe, I don't know if I want to put it somewhere else. And then I just didn't quite feel like, I mean, I've, I've read them all and I know sort of like how we define them. But I think even in our, the goal definition and in the priorities, it's still so very vague that like some things like, I wrote this, but like the word environment, like could have a million meanings. And so it felt hard for me to find places for all of the things to go.
Okay, so you feel like there, there's maybe some room to rework these a bit, the overall goals?
Possibly, yeah. Or just like to have them be a little bit more clear or to like own that some of them are going to be much larger than others. But it's hard because someone, some are so interconnected because the other problem is that some of the things just fit into multiple categories. Like how do you, how do you tease out community safety from environment and connectivity and economic prosperity?
Right, yeah. Yeah, other, other takeaways from this exercise, yeah, we can just go around.
Yeah, I was actually, I'm actually pretty happy with the goals, the buckets that we're working with. And also most of the language, I feel like there's still a lot of wiggle room for how we go about initiatives and priorities and all the other stuff. For me, I'm pretty, I'm pretty happy with the goals, but you know, if we want to modify or break some of them out, I think it would definitely be possible. But for me specifically, I'm, I'm fine with how the goals are structured right now.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. So I think some of the goals are clearer than others. So I think, I've ever heard lots of folks saying like around the housing piece in particular, it felt very hard about where do we put that? And then I think the other part that was, you know, so I had one that was just quicker delivery of city projects. And that, so there's a lot of the things that I think about and it's, it's around efficiency of things.
Yeah.
And then same thing, so if you're thinking about infrastructure projects, so one of the things I had was like a clear, like there's a clear delivery on our, on our BRT project, right? Bus rapid transit project.
Yeah.
That could go in thriving environment, right? So I think some of them are like, I'm just going to use the example, shared economic prosperity is pretty clear. I think that that to me is a, it's a much clearer thing than like thriving and, thriving and vibrant environment. Not because the goal isn't clear, but it's like, well, so many things could fit under there. And so then it becomes, in my opinion, just unwieldy.
Okay.
And challenging to then really achieve it.
Yeah.
And I would say with connected, engaged, inclusive communities, that's also just huge.
Yeah.
So those are, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, good, good.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yeah, any takeaways from the exercise? Okay.
Rist?
Do you want comments on the goals or like the process right now?
Not about the process, just about, you know, when you, when you go through this thinking exercise about your goals, about how you think about the way it's, the plan is currently organized and what you saw other colleagues writing ideas, you know, just, just overall, just want to get some of your kind of a pulse check.
Yeah, well, so I thought it was good, I thought it was really good. I think great engagement here just to sort of like get ideas out there. So a good process for just having a chance to share our sort of thoughts and reactions. I do agree with what a lot of my colleagues said. I do think the, I mean, I think housing is a big missing goal. I put that over there on the, on the what's missing. So I think having that separate, I think is, is, will be important for us.
As a potential goal.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And I think, I do agree that number three, the connected, engaged, inclusive communities is a lot of broad stuff. I think we need to sharpen that goal.
Okay.
I actually think the environment in terms of like how it's written on our goals right now, in terms of the goals, priorities, to me is pretty cohesive. And I think we need to keep an environmental one.
Yeah.
I think shared prosperity is a clear goal for the city, economic prosperity. I think we need to sort of, I think it's fairly narrow in terms of the priorities. Like we need to broaden out what we mean by that and how we talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, good.
And I do think also to your comment, I think there's, yeah, last comment. I think the, the one goal we have on the high performing organization is like sort of like internally facing.
That's right.
I think we need to write that as like community facing. What does a community think of? They think of like us delivering on stuff, right? Filling potholes and paving roads. So I think reframing that as like a community facing goal will be important.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Okay, good.
So I thought it was a great exercise. Thank you so much. Yeah, I echo, I echo a lot of what my colleagues have said. I don't, I think the, the goals are broad enough to allow a lot of flexibility. When, you know, when we talk about creating a more perfect union, I mean, what does that mean? I mean, that, that's so broad that it, and I, I see the goals as kind of parroting that type of lofty language. The only goal I really, I won't say struggling with, but, but conversations that I've had with folk in the community is shared, the shared economic prosperity, which is one that's a key priority for me, key focus area for me. I've had some interesting conversations and I think I wrote in one of my smaller sticky notes, destigmatizing shared economic prosperity. I've had some conversations with folk who I share, the same ideological address with that. Some folk, when they hear shared economic prosperity, it takes the emphasis off of the owners, the, the, the qualifications and like we're taking something from somebody and giving it to something else. And some of the business owners I've spoken to said, well, yeah, you're sharing it, but if you allow us to participate, we'll create our own.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't want to create the impression that y'all get rich and just give us some.
Yeah.
That the problem is access to capital, the pipeline. But if you, if you make the playing field fair, that you, you won't have to share yours. It's ours already. And the, the language of sharing implies that there's some folk who haven't really created it or who are just kind of waiting for it to be created. So I've had some interesting conversations around that nomenclature for shared economic prosperity. But other than that, I think all the other ones, I kind of echo with Councilman Baker, said I think I'm, I'm fine with them.
Okay, okay. Mayor?
Oh. Yeah, just one other thing to add. This is a, a big picture, high level, comprehensive. And we also have a comprehensive plan, which also has goals and priorities and objectives and all those. And so I think just, I don't think there's a right answer here, but I think just, how do we communicate how these two plans are related and unrelated to each other? How do they play off of each other? Like I said, I think every community does it differently. Like I think in some communities, the comprehensive plan is the big plan. Strategic, strategic plan is more focused.
Yeah.
And vice versa. But I think we just would benefit from clarifying that, communicating that.
Yeah, and I think we'll just put that as a parking lot item that we won't get to today specifically, but something for, for staff to think about and come back to. Mayor?
Yeah, I, I thought that, you know, going into it, I, we, we don't want to be overly prescriptive, you know, yet. So I was okay with it being rather vague, but I will say that I, I looked at the previous goals and I have seen how some things have evolved. So I was told that connected, engaged, inclusive communities, we were putting housing there. I think housing has evolved to its own thing, you know, it's, and it's what we spend the most time on. It's not the most agenda items, but it's what we spend the most time on as council.
Yeah.
And I do think we need to take a holistic look at housing and have a goal for it and all things around it. And that's just how, you know, our society has evolved since the last time the strategic plan was done. I, I actually like shared economic prosperity, but I think that we do need to have a little more, even at the high level, a little more intention or direction on it. And that's why I put I, I'd rather refer to it as economic mobility is more actionable. And it's all things, but it's moving us somewhere rather than just a plateau of just, you know, spreading things out. It's like everyone is doing something, moving towards something. And I, and I, I think we've been stagnant in that. There was another. Yeah, and, and, and how, how like, like homelessness is like also something that's evolved to be a really big issue. And, you know, just some of the things we're already doing, how we're moving a focus of homelessness under safety, community safety, and how we're, we're broadening safety between, you know, public safety and community safety. I think we're going to get to an inflection point where we have to determine how we, you know, how do we define public versus community in, in the realm of safety? And, and I think that's going to open up more capacity for us to, you know, not only celebrate but activate all of the resources we have around safety.
Yeah.
So that's just how some of the thinking has driven me. When it comes to environment, I was sort of thriving and vibrant environment. I really liked that title. It is, is probably the broadest one we have, but it, just reading that title, you know, it led me to the points that I made, you know, diversifying our land use and the purpose of the land. And I always tell people like we have empty parking decks, but we could have events on the top level, folks parking the parking deck and utilize that public space better. It's an economic driver and one thing I didn't put as a goal, because I didn't know really where to put it. And I don't think it's strong enough to stand on its own, but it's more of an action. It's how do, where's the intersectionality amongst all of these things? So those are, those were just some of the things that were in my mind as, as I was going through the process.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I, I agree with Councilmember Rist. He said, you know, you know, in efficient government, being more public facing, community facing rather than internal. I didn't say those words, but I did say, you know, productivity over process, you know, deliverables, rather than just look at what we do so well, more so what are we delivering? And I talked about incentivizing outcomes rather than, you know, really just focusing on, you know, how well you're doing a process.
Yeah, yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna take a break here as we get organized. And what we want to do when we come back from the break is we're gonna, we're gonna get into these goals. The intention isn't to, is to, is to take a look at these and do you want to rework? Do you want to add? Do you want to modify? Again, the, the goal of this is to put something together that you'll be taking out to the community. So we want to look at these goals after the break, work on them. And then we want to look at the priorities that you think fit into these goals. And then if we need to, we can do a little bit of narrowing down on those priorities that you feel like you want to take to the community.
Yeah, and you'll probably get to this later, but I, I am really intrigued on the approach that you're going to have when you go to the community. Is it this process all over again or is it, you know, with that? I'm really intrigued what that looks like. So don't ask it now because I feel like you're going to go through that anyway. So I'll wait till that, wait till that comes.
Okay, so 10 minute break as we get ourselves organized. We'll come back and then we'll get in and work on the goals and priorities. So it worked for you all? Okay, all right. Okay, all right. which goal does this priority fit under? So we'll start with the goals and then we'll come back. And it may be that the priority fits in another spot, for example.
Y'all do this a lot. Our, our, what is like a normal number of goals? What does it look like for like an effective strategic plan? Assumedly, when we wrote this, like this was a good number of goals. Is that still the case?
Yeah. It depends, but you know, four to seven. You don't want to have, you don't want to have 15 goals typically. It's more narrow. And then you have that next level down of priorities that. So you're, you're right in the, right in the sweet spot.
Thanks.
The high level kind of overview of that I would add is, you know, it's all the same pie. You guys get to decide how many goals we divide the pie up into. The more goals we have, the fewer resources go into each goal. That is absolutely your discretion. But I just, you know, the, I think as goals get higher than the focus gets a little bit lower. That doesn't mean more goals isn't, is bad or good. It just want, that's the trade off of more goals versus less goals.
So we'll, we'll go through this and we, we've got your current goals. And Victor and Danielle and I are gonna try to real time work through this. We, what we want to make sure is if there's another big goal, we want to get that up there. We don't necessarily have to get to all the wordsmithing on this, but we want to make sure we understand if they're, what the, what the key elements of that goal are. And then staff can come back and bring that back to you. So we'll do our best to try to get the, get the language. But remember in your strategic plan, you have the goal and then you have the additional language beneath it. Oh, that is not up here. That is, that was something that we heard. So that is a placeholder that maybe it does go up here, maybe it doesn't. Yeah. Okay. So we'll, we can start just going from the first one, shared economic prosperity. And a couple of the comments here were de-stigmatize Durham businesses and workers, economic mobility, making sure prosperity equals income and wealth. So just asking the question, is this one that you, you want to modify the language? Or anything that we want to make sure we work on with this goal? Any thoughts on this? And we'll take, we'll take notes and get them up there.
Well, I'll start. The language de-stigmatizing was my language. And again, the Durham's a wealthy place and we've got some folk who are doing really well. And surprisingly, some of the conversations I had that were most poignant were from folk who we share the same, as I said, address ideologically. And they said, well, you know, when you say shared economic prosperity, sometimes it implies that you're giving folks something that they haven't earned or deserved. And what they want to be known as, they're just as excellent. They're just as, you know, good at what they do. What they need is, is access. Access to capital that they've paid taxes for already. You know, access to institutions that benefit from their taxes. So you're not really sharing it with us. You're just giving us what we're due. So some nomenclature that recognizes Durham as an economic powerhouse and recognizes talent rather than entitlement. And again, this is coming from folk who are, would be the primary beneficiaries of shared economic prosperity.
So I'll ask the question, what's success look like? If you think, if you put yourself.
That's the other thing I wrote, yeah. Yeah.
No, I appreciate the comments there. I mean, I like the goal generally, but I hear, I hear your comments. And I wonder, not to get into wordsmithing, but I wonder if something like, instead like simply broad based economic prosperity, which is more like gets to the outcome. It's sort of like gets away from like, you know, shared or whatever. It's like broad base. Because I think, I think having an outcome is key. I think something like opportunity is kind of nice, but I think that doesn't get, I think we want the outcome, not the sort of like, not the input. So I think broad base maybe.
Yeah.
I, I had the exact opposite thought. And so, and that was what I put on there about my, yeah, that I didn't feel like it was targeted enough that shared economic prosperity feels like. And I mean, I think we're all familiar with the like tides lift all boats and that sort of thing. But that having this like sort of idea of broad economic prosperity is like, we are willing to do as much for folks at the top as we are to do for folks at the bottom. And like for me, that didn't, it didn't feel like the priorities of the city.
Is it something where you could, just a question, is it something where you could have, say, broad, broad based shared economic prosperity, but your priorities are more targeted?
Yeah, I just, yeah, for me, I think when I read shared economic prosperity, I feel like it, it does feel like, or even I guess economic prosperity, that it's like, we're the, we are like the city government. And so like, we're not here to like help the top one percenters like get more money. Right? Like, I mean, that sometimes ends up happening because of capitalism. But like, that's not, I think, in our strategic goals, like sort of what we're, what we're aiming for with that, I hope. But yeah.
Yeah. Thoughts on?
Yeah, I think that, I think the goal is supposed to be broad and that the objectives and initiatives are supposed to be targeted. That's the, that's the, that's the path we're on. So if we want real targeted supports for, for, because certain populations haven't historically been given those opportunities or whatnot, then I think that's where we, that's where the targeted language can really come in. And I don't know, I think the mayor said something about mobility. So then it like, like, does it become economic prosperity and mobility? Right? And then that piece, that shared piece, which I think we all understand, is then that that's the space where you get into the weeds of like, well, how do you achieve that? Right? What are, what are the inputs? But then the outcomes that show that. And that's, that's where the, that's where our programs, our initiatives, that's where that lives. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just say, my, I mean, my comments were informed by black folk who own businesses and who are trying to get a capital in the city. So I want to be very transparent about that. This isn't my own kind of musings. I'm just channeling. I think though, that a lot of good points are being made. You know, as a government, ideally, we want to create an environment for everybody to thrive. But historically, there have been some that have not. And, and again, my concern is telegraphing a message that we're doing something for you that, that could antagonize others. And that's not, what I'm hearing is, listen, if you let us in, we're going to kill it. You get us into a supply chain, you know. So how do we capture that without, you know, doing any violence to our values as a city? So I just want to telegraph, you know, what I've heard.
Yeah, Nate, thoughts?
Yeah, I'll just throw, throw in one more suggestion. I'm good with shared economic prosperity, but I'm also listening to my colleagues. I like broad based. I would just throw out also collective, kind of like, we're all in this together. We all want to prosper collectively as, as a community and as a city.
Yeah. So I mean, it sounds like you've got a couple of ideas to maybe tweak the language, the overall goal language. But that as, as you said, the priorities could be more targeted to where you want to put your energy. And that also helps to find it. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah. No, go ahead, go ahead. I, I, so I don't want to be too long winded on it, but shared economic prosperity and mobility is, I think it encapsures all. Now, I'm not going to be, I was, I'm a colleague's comment. I have no interest in utilizing public resources to help, you know, someone who doesn't need it. But I also don't want to be in the practice of having a unintentionally, probably, but adversarial as the government for any one population, no matter what it is. But the reason why I'm utilizing the word mobility is because we have, we have to, we have to also encourage, you know, movement. You know, like we, prosperity is the, is the, is the goal. Mobility is the action. It's like we're all doing something, you know? And, and I, and also, I mean, this is Durham. And there is, and the wording does matter in this. We should not be a city that is anti-capitalism, you know? And what, the pain we're feeling is mostly anti, is mostly corporatism. And we, we often get that, I'm a capitalist. I own a business. I work to make a living and I pay wages for folks to make a living. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, especially when our city's history is built on capitalism. What happens when corporatism comes in and utilizes its broad resources to overpower what we're trying to do here at the local level? And, you know, so I think it is damaging when we are anti-capitalist for what we see it and define it as in Durham. So I just want to make sure that I am trying to utilize language that moves everyone toward a goal. That goal is prosperity. Mobility is how we're moving. Or mobility is taking advantage of the opportunity to do something, you know? And so for me, the wording does imply the mindset.
So you would be, you'd be okay with keeping the language as it is?
Well, shared, shared economic, shared economic prosperity, it is identifying something. It does not do anything. Mobility as the doing. Mobility is like we are like upward mobility. Everyone is, you know, trying to, you know, be better tomorrow than they were today. You know? And I do think that we have to have, you know, like, shared economic prosperity for me means we're going to take what we have. We're just going to share across the board equally. And that just doesn't work to me. But mobility is, we have a goal that we're all set on and we're going to all work together. Self accountability, you know, we're going to, we're going to take advantage of the resources that are available. And we're going to try and be better tomorrow than we were today.
Yeah. Carl?
So you're suggesting like shared economic prosperity and mobility?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, no, I think that's right. And I think the key is just that we, that we, that we, and I think you've got good feedback here from all my council colleagues.
Yeah.
I think the key is we just have a goal that in the end. I think the key is we just have a goal that in the end reads like direct. It's not sort of like euphemism and very mushy, like, we need to make it direct, but that works for me.
Okay. So let's, we'll put that as a placeholder now, again, and?
Councilmember.
Yes. Thank you.
I would just say that there had to be some clarity or some way to make sure that that mobility doesn't become about transportation. Because I feel like in the city government, mobility is tied to transportation. But I, I do think I like the collective economic prosperity. I like the, the, even the collective upward economic prosperity. But I do think the mobility would be more towards transportation.
Yeah. So just be, beware of that or maybe think about potentially another.
Yeah.
Let's look at the priorities, because the priorities are what you're going to, what you want to do over the next?
Then also, just, just adding, I think there is a problem with capitalism and it's because it centers plantation capitalism in a way that's, that's extricating or taking away from one to the other. And so the shared is why we ended up there, I think, in the past. It's acknowledging that there was, there's a whole lot of extraction happening in community, a whole lot of extractive tactics being taken. And so the corporatism is one part, but the extraction is the other piece. And when you're forced to share, that extraction piece is removed.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think all of this is, this is also going to help to clarify the language underneath the goal too, what this means, why it matters. Let's look at the, let's look at the priorities that you have here. And, actually, let's, we'll go, we'll, we'll go ahead and put these up here. Maybe Danielle, we can put these up. So I think, you know, the, the question for you all is ultimately, you're going to take these out to the community. And so we want to see if there are pretty similar ideas we could potentially group and if there is something where you've got some different, you know, difference of opinions. So we'll get the, we're going to put these up here related to this goal. So one is, think of these again as three-year things that you want to do to help you achieve this goal. Build a broad-based wealth, build broad-based wealth via business startup, homeownership and worker ownership. And you've got economic justice that, that, that center historically marginalized community, acknowledging stolen land and forced free labor, decentralizing plantation capitalism. Oh, there's on the back. That doesn't honor the workers that makes our quality of life possible. Okay? You have support entrepreneur and small businesses. Make it easy to start and grow a business. Implement economic development strategies that grow, that grow worker-owned businesses while supporting workers and small businesses. Establish a framework for economic mobility. A thriving arts culture scene that will, that's well-funded. Lots of public art and artists, culture workers feeling supported. Social and housing justice. A unified economic development plan. Shared economic prosperity that truly benefits Durham residents. Meaningful pathways to stable employment. Enlarge guaranteed income footprint. Living wage for everyone and benefits. Affordable commercial spaces, creating more broadly shared prosperity, strengthening small businesses. So those are the, those are the things, those are the ideas that you have around this, this goal area here. And I think there may be some opportunity to sort of organize and combine some of these ideas. It's a lot. If you look at your current strategic plan, you have three areas in it. But for the purpose of this, you can take more out to, to the community and get some community feedback on, on these priorities. So if there's something that you wrote that you want to clarify, make sure folks understand it, or, or just an observation here about how we can try to organize these into a set of priorities? Yeah?
I just want to say that I see that we're combining the small businesses and I think that's totally fine. I did also have entrepreneurship on there and I do want to make sure that that is, that stays.
Separate from small businesses?
Yeah, because I think that there is, support for small businesses could look different than like having space for people to, to start and like kind of workshop ideas, right? Like, I think these are kind of two different, they can be combined, but they're not all at the same stages of time.
Yeah. So there could be, there could be one on small businesses, one on entrepreneurship. Your priority. Mark, did you have a?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm wrestling also with the intellectual tension between, when I think of shared economic prosperity, I, I'm assuming it's going to happen within the context, the economic context that already exists. Like, as a city council person, I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote capitalism away. So, so, you know, every billion-dollar business was once a hundred thousand dollar business. And some of these small entrepreneurial ventures may very well become a mega, you know, corporation in this environment. So I, I just want to be clear, when I talk about shared economic prosperity, I'm talking about it within the system we currently exist in.
Yeah.
Some cogent critiques of capitalism and many of them I share, but, you know, when I'm talking about it, I'm talking about it within this context that we live and exist. So at the municipal level particularly. So I just want to put that on there.
Okay.
I think that's what I'm struggling with. There, there's real, there's real life, like real world. I don't want to critique the goals because they are goals. And I think how we get there is where we really get into the meat and potatoes. But as, as someone who actually runs a business, some things not make, some things won't make sense to me, you know? They're idealistic and I want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up to disappoint people because there are just some things we don't control, you know? So I, 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 there, there, there's a lot of philosophy in this. And, and I, I think that, you know, what I would, I mean, we all, you know, seven of us, we're going to take our own approaches to it. For me, the reason why I probably have the least amount of words on a piece of paper up there is because sometimes government just needs to get out of the way. There's a whole other world out there that is doing this, you know? And my, my goal is, as the government, is to catalyze that opportunity and create that capacity. So I'm thinking maybe I should have been more specific on what that looks like.
Yeah, and that's what this conversation's for. So, you know, this is, as, as you know, this is directing your staff, how they want, how you want them to spend resources, people, energy. So that's, you know, and there's plenty of opportunity, as you hear others, to, to, you know, add to this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll let you facilitate who goes, because you're watching.
I'm happy to. Yeah. So Nate?
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a socialist and I put, make it easy to start businesses and grow businesses in Durham. So I definitely think that there's the, the balance and, you know, obviously working within the system, but also critiquing the system at the same time.
I'm a capitalist, I agree with you on that.
Yeah. So one thing that I would say, I, I'm not sure if it's missing, but someone wrote economic development plan, I've probably written that somewhere, but this, somebody else wrote that up here. And I think that might capture a comprehensive approach to economic development, but one piece that just kind of, is kind of a glaring missing piece up here is focusing on our base industries and what's actually bringing resources into, into Durham and keeping resources here so that our small business communities and our, our other communities can thrive. So just, I don't want us to lose sight on, I mean, that is like the core piece of economic development is, is the base industries that is, that are bringing in the resources. So I think that's one thing that, that we need to make sure is, is highlighted and focused on.
If you, if you have a priority around start and grow businesses, does that get to the base businesses? Or are you thinking base businesses is really something?
Kind of keeping businesses here that are, that are part of base industries, nurturing the growth and entrepreneurship of, which is of course words that we have here, but, but of base industries as well. So, you know, not to, not to lose sight of all of our small businesses, but definitely our, our base industries.
Okay. Yeah, we got, have you, and then Carl?
Thank you. Very quickly, so mine, mine's up there. I think the part that I'm not seeing, I just really want to highlight is, for me, and this is for all the goals, we get really into what the city is doing and we really need to work on with partners.
Yeah.
And so I think I put comprehensive economic development plan. And what I mean by comprehensive is the county, the chamber, key partners, key foundations. It, it can't be us alone. And so I, I know that this is the city's strategic plan, but that has to be everywhere, that everything we are doing is in collaboration with other key partners. Because quite frankly, we don't have the money to deliver on these things if we are not working with others. And that goes back to that shared economic prosperity. It's just shared or it's collective. And I, I want that really reflected across the strategic plan and you're going to see it in almost every one of my things. A comprehensive housing strategy. Comprehensive economic development strategy. And I think we, we get real siloed and then we just, we don't ever get to, we don't achieve the thing that we're asking for. And then the second part is, I'm the one who puts, put the arts piece up there, because I think a lot of times people think arts and cultures is like nice to have. It is an economic driver. It is a massive economic driver if it's done appropriately and I don't want to lose sight of that. And to that piece around capitalism or what, I don't, I know the lane I sit in, I'm not going to, I'm going to be a, you know, go back to school and deer eyes about economic philosophies. That's not why I, I'm on council. And I, what I do want us to, and that kind of goes back to that shared piece, we have to be able to support residents or small businesses broadly, meaning like, great, I, I love that like we have a lot of lab sciences that are evolving or whatever, but I don't want to pigeonhole, like, and I say this about the arts piece, that scene is sometimes is like, oh, well, we don't need artists or we don't need these creatives or we, right? Because it's not really how, you know, you make money. And I, I really want us to think really broadly on that, what does actually like push an economy?
Yeah.
If that makes sense. So that's the other thing that I want reflected somehow.
Carl?
Just a couple of comments. And I want to make sure, so maybe also a time check, I know we have a bunch of goals to go through.
We do.
So like, we have a bunch of comments there also, on the smaller stickies about how you might be doing more or less differently.
Yeah.
So I put a lot of stuff there about, you know, pieces, for example, as Councilmember Baker said, I think part of our strategy needs to be not only, not only thinking about the key sectors, right? But you're absolutely right, like retention is a big part of what we need to be doing. We don't talk about that a lot, but retaining those firms is key. Also, to your point, Councilmember Caballero, like strengthening our, our OEWD directors here, but strengthening the role of OEWD as a convener, convening all the partners, right? Yeah. So that's part of, so part of that is like making sure the city's role is, is right, but also bringing those other partners in there, so key in this stuff. The other piece we haven't talked anything about, which is also critical, is like, it's the workforce piece, right? Making sure all our kids in Durham are properly prepared for these jobs of the future that we're, that we're growing in Durham. So that, that piece has got to be there. And that's a big part of the shared piece, to make sure kids, whatever neighborhood you grew up in, are well-trained for the best jobs we have here in Durham.
Okay. So I'm?
Yes, I don't know if we're going to get to the smaller ones or maybe not. We don't lose sight of those.
Yeah. I mean, if there's something you wrote in the, sort of in the small, that, it should come out in this part as well. Do you want to jump in?
Same thing. It's just to the more, I just want to highlight to that piece, and it goes back to this like comprehensive partnership with Durham Tech, partnership with DPS. It goes back to that workforce piece that I think really informs that shared economic prosperity. I think somebody put in there like pathways of opportunity, right? For, for students and for young people. And so to Councilmember Riss's point, you know, there's some of that there and it does need to be. And we talk about that a lot here as a council, like how are we supporting our youth? And that is a major way in how we support our youth.
Thank you. I was just going to note a few of the things that I've pointed out. And I think specifically just acknowledging that economic justice, I want to be really clear, economics is not about theory. There's a lot of history in there, especially in this country. And knowing that the wealth of the country has been built off the backs of people is a huge part of why black and brown businesses suffer in the way that they do. And so if we're doing collective economic prosperity and not acknowledging the history of this country and the history of what's been happening in the city, we'll miss the opportunity to actually reach the goal. And so I, I do want to note, I did also want to agree with the fact that artists are business owners, artists are entrepreneurs, sawar welders. There are a lot of creatives that are also in business spaces that need access to space or access to capital in the same ways in which chicken sellers do as well. And then on the workforce development side, just acknowledging it's not just limited to adults and youth, that children have to start someplace. And so we have a huge gap in our fourth to eighth grade area and what that looks like in shared economic prosperity. And we're talking about upward mobility, that's where you lose most of the kids, is in fourth to eighth grade.
Yeah.
And so making sure that we're not losing sight of how that connects, because I, I heard the question about how does this all connect? It's quality of life. And the quality of life that children have here as they become adults makes a difference. And the quality of life of the seniors who are not going to go to work anymore matters as well. And so all of that ties us together. And I also will say that the reason that, you know, understanding how plantation capital has forced us into this silo of thinking that work and labor are the only tangent or tangent pieces between economics is harmful, because the people who no longer work are still valued, like they have to be valued in some form or fashion. And they're a part of our economic fabric as well. So just making sure we don't lose sight of all of those pieces, that's all.
Yeah.
And I would, I think where, where all of this is happening, I don't know how you build that in, but this upward mobility conversation, knowing that, you know, 27701 is very different from 27704, 27712, like those zip codes matter and how you build that into the workforce and economic development, how you build it into economic prosperity or upward mobility all has to also be a factor.
Yeah. There, I, I think there's, I mean, I think there's a lot of commonality here in terms of what, what you all want to see happen. And I think it's important to note, we're, you know, it's messy up here, but I mean, it's just some of the themes, and I want to get to the other goals as well. But I mean, some of the things, starting and growing businesses, retaining your base industries, economic development, a part, a comprehensive economic development approach with partners, arts and culture, a workforce focus. I mean, in a workforce focus, when you get into the specific initiatives, you're going to have a lot of these things that you've just talked about need to be part of that. So I think I'm hearing that there is a lot, and, and to your point, there's, there's a why this matters and what we're trying to do that has to, has to sort of explain the philosophy, explain the whys behind what you're doing, I think, as well, that needs to be part of the language that you bring out to the community.
Can I get a term defined? The, other than tobacco and textiles, what are the base industries of Durham? What do we mean by that?
Yeah.
I mean, I would say it's more like our key sectors. Like, to me, that would be like higher ed, like healthcare, life sciences, information technology, those are the key sectors. I mean, those are the traditional industries you named, like tobacco. But to me, it's the key sectors today that are the sort of like biggest and growing kind of parts of our economy.
Yeah, arts would be one of your key sectors. So that, yeah. I mean, maybe that goes under, sort of under that broader category and it's a specific initiative.
So the retention of our educational institutions, life sciences and that's?
Technology, yeah.
Yeah. So there's?
They're kind of newer.
Yeah. So you're, you're retaining key sector industries, but you're also having an additional priority around growing and nurturing businesses as well. Yeah, Chelsea?
Just one more thing as we're moving out of this that I wanted to say, which is that like, I feel like we have sort of narrowed this topic down to be more about like workforce and business, but part of economic prosperity is also being able to like hold money. And unfortunately, in this realm of the world, that is a lot of times tied with land ownership. So I had put access to homeownership in a different category, or I think I put it in the what's missing category because I didn't feel like it really fit with the narrative of what we were going for with our shared economic prosperity. But I do want to like just note that it's an important piece. Like, we can't just talk about like what it takes to like be competitive in a marketplace and then not talk about like how we invest and hold and, and share that wealth.
Yeah.
Anyway, just as an aside.
Sorry, Carl?
I think we named income and wealth as part of like, I think there's a, somewhere in here, like there's, it's both. You know, I think we named income and wealth as part of like, I think there's a, somewhere in here, like, it's both income...
Right.
You know, month to month, but also like, wealth.
Yeah. But I do feel like that gets really broad really fast. Like, if we put like, access to homeownership in this one, it really like, to me, it shifts the focus quite, quite far. But I mean, if y'all think that that belongs there, I'm happy to let it live there.
Yeah, I mean, to me, like, homes, businesses are all forms of wealth. Worker ownership, also wealth, they're all wealth.
So then, yeah, maybe that moves, that guide from the what's missing moves into the economic prosperity category. I don't know.
Well, let me, let me ask this, because I think it's, it's coming up as you look. I want to just come back to the goals, and then, and then maybe we come back and do some deep dive on the priorities. But as you look at these, do you need to modify? Let's talk about modification of the goals. I mean, and housing is something that, that has come up. Is that, let me just ask, is that something that needs to be a standalone goal? And if so, what, what is, what is success, or what's the goal? Carl?
The question about, about housing?
Yeah. Is that something that you want to, you want to elevate as a standalone strategic goal for the city?
I think so, yeah. And I know, like, we had that one that I think said housing. I think it is sort of a, and I'm looking to Councilmember Caballero, it's something about like, expanding housing choices? That sounds like too much. Yeah. Like, but like, it's like housing options, but it's, it's a whole range of options, right? From, from affordable to missing middle to market REOs, all those, right?
Yeah. I mean, I think that right now, I don't, I don't know how it gets phrased. I'm not, I'm not there yet, but I do, and to me, so for me, housing is also just infrastructure, essentially. And so I don't, the thing that has struck me is, at the end of the day, what the, you know, when, when, at least when I go out into community, when folks need that kind of just, especially in Durham, what's the difference between city and county government? One of the basic things is, we do infrastructure, they do services. Like, that's, right? And that is not really highlighted in a goal, right? So you could put it in thriving and vibrant environment, but there's not that, we build your roads, we run your buses, we help build housing. Like, how is that defined at that very high level? I don't see it. It can be embedded in several things. But I, but I think that, at least for me, I would like that very, you know...
Yeah. Just to add to that, because I do want to get us, I think there's a lot of discussion around this, and hopefully we can be able to get to the other goals after conceptually getting through this one.
Yeah.
But housing, when I, again, going back and evolving, if I'm looking at how we've evolved since the last, since the last goals or the plan, housing has become such a big topic. And it's what we deal with the most. And, and, and it's what the community is talking about the most as well. And I think that when it's an actual, when it's a goal or a focus area, it allows us the, it affords us the opportunity to be able to communicate about it more. One of the points I talked about was accessible and digest, digestive communication or information. The only thing that I worry is, you know, what is housing as a goal? And how do we communicate that? And, and I want to bring us back. This is not a, this is, we're trying to set goals. We're not trying to utilize this to educate people on the different perspectives of what something is. You know, like, we're trying to set a goal, we're trying to reach a point where we're not currently. And, and so I'm thinking of it through that lens, and I'd like us to, you know, I want to make sure you're making clear to us what your expectations are, so we can get through the goals.
Yeah. So what we're, what we want to do with the goal, we want the goals and the priorities, is we want to get a set of draft goals and priorities that ultimately give your staff focus on how to allocate resources and time. And so this is, again, a first cut, and it's intended to essentially give guidance to your staff and let the community know what, what your priorities are. If I, if I could...
I would just say that...
Yeah.
The key, the key things in both housing and infrastructure has to be, like, I mean, there has to be some understanding that they're on planet Earth, and how your resources are used will matter. Like, this, the reason that they're sitting within kind of like, that thriving and vibrant environment is because they're a part of that work to make sure that we're sustainably building, not just building all over because we need housing, and that we have the infrastructure in place to make sure that the fire engines and the police and whomever else trash can all get to where those things are occurring. So when you pull them out without that thriving and vibrant environment, it's, it's a little bit of a, like, you got to make sure you take it with you.
Yeah. I mean, these things really intersect. I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we can, we can find where we can, we can work through these goals here. Creating a safe, a safer community together, that's not one where you had any suggested changes to that goal? Is that one, is that one where you feel you're good with that goal as it's currently written? Yeah, Carl?
This is one, this is just very, just wording?
Yeah.
It's the one goal that's framed as like a verb. I think it should be a noun, like...
Yeah. Okay.
Community, or sort of safe, safe and vibrant community, or whatever, but like...
Okay. Okay. So the, so... What was that?
I think a safer community...
A safer community?
Yeah. Or something. But like, in general, I'm happy with the goal. And to your point, yeah, if we're going to be consistent on language, then that makes sense.
Okay. So this sounds like this is one where we're pretty close. Safer community, okay. Let me ask about...
We just have safe as opposed to safer.
Yeah. Safe community together?
Yeah. Let's take the R off, because...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thrive for, thrive for the safe.
Yeah. That's the destination, a safe community together. Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Strike the create.
We'll rewrite it, yeah. I tried to cross it off. Okay. I want to see where else we, we think we want to modify these, and then we can get into some of the details of these individually. You've got thriving and vibrant environment. And that was one where there was a question, you know, I think you're, does housing go in here? Or does it go somewhere else? This goal, as it's written, thriving and, thriving and vibrant environment, is this one that you feel still resonates? It's one that you still feel good with? So you're shaking your head, so, yeah, let's look at this one.
Yeah, I just wanted your question directly about housing as a standalone issue.
Yeah.
And I don't know, but, and I'm, I just want to be transparent, because when I think of a strategy, a strategy is what anchors you when issues du jour pop up. You know, your strategy is what keeps an organization grounded. And because housing, I talk to a lot of people, they talk about gun violence. They talk about getting a job.
Yeah.
They have somewhere to live. So I think sometimes the loudest voices and the most organized listservs can kind of drive the public discussion.
Okay.
Which is a whole lot of other people who may not be necessarily dialed in. I've, if, housing is a standalone issue. I've never had a conversation of housing as a standalone issue. I've never had a vote or a debate about housing where infrastructure didn't come up, where amenities didn't come up, where emergency response didn't come up. So I, just intellectually, I've never talked about it as a standalone issue. So I wouldn't even know how, because, you know, a, a single-family home that's 5,000 square feet on two acres is a house.
Yeah.
And then you have, you know, a multifamily apartment building.
Yeah.
That's housing as well.
Yeah.
And I've just seen so much movement along the continuum about housing. You know, are we talking about housing on a static piece of city land, and we're not going to expand that anymore? Or are we talking about, so I, I've just never had a conversation about housing that was isolated or standalone. It always touched, always issues.
I would just dive in a little, just real quick. All right. So the reason why I was talking about that is because one of the goals I have is I just want to house people. And I, I want to house people, I want housing at every level. And it's an opportunity to better educate about housing, because that's what we talk about the most. And, you know, a safe community together, you know, I think we can dive into that as well. But that's where I, I think it's because I'm just exhausted of just the misinformation and disinformation around housing and development. And some of us are guilty of making that even worse. So I just, I think having it as a centerpiece is an opportunity to be, to have much more integrity in the conversation.
So I don't want to get, Javier, you've, you've had your hand up, but then I want to come back to the goals here.
Yeah. I mean, with the thriving, to Councilmember Freeman's point around sustainability, I think that that is then, that is like, to me, that's the part, like, it's a way that you get to the thing, right? You do it in a sustainable way. So I, like, for me, it's like, could it be housing in the built environment, right? Because, because it's, it goes back in, like, I want us to, somewhere in our strategic goals, we've got to talk about our core functions. We have to get to that point. And our core functions as a city, at the end of the day, is that infrastructure piece. We get so many, we get things around housing, but we got a whole bunch of stuff around, I need a sidewalk, when's this road getting paved? When is this part going to get improved? That's all infrastructure. So I think, and, and then the sustainability piece is important, but I think that that can be, like, you, you can reflect that in the goal further down. Like, we're going to move these things in a sustainable way.
All right. So you're, you're suggesting that you have a goal that's something around housing and built, and the built environment, and that would replace, that would, so you'd put housing then underneath that? Yeah.
My suggestion is it would replace thriving and vibrant environment? Because I feel like I, I need it to be less squishy, right? I need clear, that this is a, it's a strategic plan. Strategy involves analysis and moving towards a thing and being able to achieve those goals.
Yeah. Chelsea, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I mean, I actually was going to say that we could put housing under this. I do want to be careful that we're not missing the like, other type of environment, environment piece, which is like, ensuring that we are thinking about, yeah, the actual environment. Yeah. And, and to this point, like, yeah, I mean, all of these things are very interconnected, and, and we know that they are. And so like, we're trying to sort of create these goals. But I'm, I am okay with housing living under this category, but as long as we make sure that we have, and it might be that we need another category that is like, talking about the actual environment.
Right.
But I think also that that could be tied in with, with growth and infrastructure, and that might take us to our other sort of vague category that everyone felt, which is the connected, engaged, inclusive communities.
So Carl, do you have a suggestion or build on this?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm all about like, I'm all about clarity in this thing, and sort of like, speaking to our residents, and how they think about the world. And so I think, if you think about whether it's in Durham or nationwide, big issues are like, it's like jobs. We talk about jobs and prosperity, right? It's like housing, 100%. The cost of housing is something we hear about every day on this council. So to me, like, having a housing priority by itself, clear, like, mixing it with a built environment gets super squishy. I'm going to come back to that. So I think housing writ large is like, huge priority. I'd say, to Councilmember Cook's comments, climate change is a huge, huge issue in this community across our country. So having a separate goal, as we've had on thriving and vibrant environment, to me, is like, a no-brainer. So I think we need to keep that.
Keep that.
I would say, on the infrastructure piece, I think there's a question about like, to me, that gets a little kind of wonky, the terminology, but to me, there's a, there should be a goal that would be like, delivering city, like, high-quality city services. And that gets to your point about whether it's like, roads, or parks, or buses and all that. Like, that's the infrastructure piece. It's like, the, like, high-quality city services. And that speaks to like, when we talk to residents, we hear this every day, like, we, like, can you just pave the roads? Do the puddles? I think that should be a goal. And I think that speaks to the infrastructure piece. So I don't know if that's helpful.
So you would, you would, you would have housing under, as a standalone?
By itself, yeah. Because it's such a, it's such a big issue.
Yeah. What do you think?
We're all going to fall differently on that.
Yeah.
Amazing. I, I agree with Mayor Protem.
Did you say amazing?
But, so my suggestion originally with the thriving and vibrant environment was, was to change that to thriving and vibrant, built-in natural environment, just to...
Built-in natural?
Built-in natural environment, just to clarify that, so that everything can fall under there. For, for me, housing falls under there. If, if, if we're going to tear each other apart because we need housing to be broken out, I'm fine with that.
Uh-huh.
But me, I would put it under, under that because, because housing is part of the land. It's, it goes somewhere, it is within the built, the built environment.
Can you say what, what it was the goal again? Like...
Thriving and vibrant environment. I suggest thriving and vibrant, built-in natural environment.
Built-in natural environment.
We don't, or we can just say vibrant, built-in natural environment.
Take a word, like, I'm, I'm real into like, three, four words.
We can cut either thriving or vibrant.
Let's cut thriving.
So a vibrant...
Vibrant, built-in natural environment.
Natural environment.
And this is taking that out.
Well, you, is that too, Carl, is that too broad?
I think it, I think it clarifies what, so right now, it's thriving and vibrant environment. And that clarifies that we're talking about a physical, you know, built-in natural.
Yeah. I, I agree with Councilmember Baker more than you realize. Yeah, I, this is the part of the strategic, strategic plan where we can be, I don't want to use the word squishy. This is the part where it's supposed to be kind of broad and aspirational. And as we get to lower layers, you know, it gets more specific. I mean, to me, housing is an issue. I mean, by the same argument, gun violence should have its own standing.
Uh-huh.
Because it's, because, because, yeah. But it's, but it's not its own standing issue is my point, that it's going under safety, just like housing can go. I agree with the language of thriving and a vibrant, built and/or natural environment.
And so would housing, would housing then fall under that?
Yeah, I, I believe so. Because if, if we're, if we're going to go at this level, if we're going to go to issues, I got about four or five issues that I think could, an argument could be made for it to be standalone. But I don't, I don't think this is the part of the strategic plan. But I can also say about, I, I've always made the distinction, the strategic plan is what separates, a, a city can have core services without a strategic plan. To me, the strategic plan is the opportunity for a system, for a city not to become a cookie cutter with other cities. You got to pave the roads. You got to answer 911, you got to pick up the garbage. Any city has to do that, your core deliverables. For me, I've always seen the strategic plan as an opportunity to differentiate yourself above and beyond those. Those things are given, you know, where you're not going to, you're going to get your charter yanked. To me, this is an opportunity to kind of dream beyond the core deliverables. That's how I've always seen it, so.
Okay. You, I wanted to ask, I wanted to, because with housing, I guess, just getting your reaction to this potential rework, vibrant, built, natural environment, for how?
Yeah, I think the built, kind of, two things fall under built, housing and infrastructure. So I, at least for me, right? I, I'm not going to die on the hill of housing being a standalone thing. I just need, I think it needs, whenever we do this exercise again, we cannot walk around and be like, well, where does housing fit? How about that?
Yeah.
So, so as long as it's clear, right? Does that make sense? So that, that's, that's my piece, is like, today, we all kind of walked around where housing is a huge issue. I understand your point, Mayor Protem. So somewhere it has to get captured in a much clearer way. And I don't think it's captured in the way, in that currently. So that, those are my two cents.
I just think this is, I think we're, we're doing what government does. We're getting further away from the people who we're supposed to impact, being able to understand what the hell we're talking about.
Okay.
I'd like to be just a bit more specific in the goal. I think that the more words we use in describing it, the more in the weeds we're getting. I know housing is an issue, but, you know, for me, housing is a goal. I want to house folks. So I'm just very clear about, about it. You know, when you're housing people, you're going to have to do the infrastructure and everything else. But infrastructure is broad as well. I think that can go under environment, because when we're talking about stormwater infrastructure, we're talking about, why? Climate and the environment. So I just, I'm looking, I'm looking retroactively at where we have come from since the last plan. And if you, if you were to go back and look at our information, look at our meetings, look at what we're talking about, look at what the community has pissed off at us about, housing.
So would you all be, would you all be comfortable?
I also want to acknowledge, I've never heard Middleton, Freeman, and Baker on the same page before, so I just want to honor that moment.
I want to be really clear that if you are separating housing, gun violence does need to be separated out. So, I mean, this, this thing where you do this one issue is problematic. this one issue is problematic.
You want to bring it back under, Carl, are you, so you would, you would go ahead and put housing in, in this broad, okay?
I would, yeah, it would be the vibrant.
Sort of move it down into here. Okay.
It would be the vibrant, built, yeah, that whole thing.
And natural.
Okay.
Built and natural environment with those underneath it.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, you asked earlier what success looks like in, in these terms, and I think that it would be helpful if we thought about that for a second, because I think that, and I hear what you're saying in terms of, like, it feels too vague. But for me, I'm kind of like, the built and natural environment seems to fit, because we can very easily define this with one of our things where we're saying, like, safe and stable and affordable housing in an environment that is like thriving, and whatever, we can bring our thriving word back, in a natural environment that's thriving. And then, to me, I'm just thinking about this breakdown between, like, the second and third tier, and how I feel like, I know we've talked about it, and someone's going to defuzzy it, but they feel very repetitive. But for something like this, which is a larger topic, they could be, we could use that second tier to really break it down. Like, here's what we're talking about under natural environment, here's what we're talking under built environment, and then we have the things that go down from there and actually like have it as a, as more of a true tree, as opposed to like getting to whatever the fourth, and I do not remember the names because they don't make any sense to me, but like whatever, we get to the initiatives, right? Is that the fourth tier?
Yeah.
And then we've got like, we've got like a very clear path as to how we got there. And like, this one is related to housing, and this one is related to natural. Like, we could actually like utilize those four levels to like have something that breaks it down in a sensible way.
Okay.
Since it is going to, I think with this category, it will be really big. But for me, I'm, I'm good with the built and natural environment.
And then housing would be called out, for example, specifically?
Yeah, I think in the definition, right, the goal definition, we talk about safe and affordable housing, because that encompasses, like, infrastructure, it encompasses lots of things within that, because you can't have affordable housing if you don't have infrastructure and the other things you need.
I mean, the, the good news is you all agree on the things that you want to do, it's just deciding if this becomes a standalone goal or if it gets.
And again, I just want to make sure we do a standalone goal on youth supports and gun violence as well, and the, under safe community.
Again, I, I'm not, I'm not looking at housing as, I hear it as an issue, but I'm, I'm looking at housing as a goal. I just want to be very clear about that.
Yeah, Carl, I think you're, yeah, so we're not.
And again, like, for me, like, housing is a goal, like, climate change slash environment, that's a goal. That's what, again, when, when I try to think about, what people in Durham think about, when they think about what they want from city government, it's like, housing, jobs, environment, safety, those are the big ones.
And not to get shot.
That's what I said, safety, that's one of the big ones. Absolutely.
Can I ask a question? Like, do you all at least have some idea of, like, the consensus on some of this? Like, we're not all 100% there, but like, is, have you gotten enough from us that we can move on to the other ones? Because otherwise, we're going to be here for the next.
Well, we've got about, yeah, we've got about 30 minutes. And this is, this is pretty critical, though, because you're trying to define the goals. I mean, you, you have the ideas, I think, consensus. Whether or not you want to make this a standalone goal, whether or not you want to separate it, I mean, that's.
I just think we're going to have to, we're going to have a dialogue around ourselves. I don't think we're going to get there right today. Yeah.
Let's, let's, let me ask about the innovative and high performing organization goal. And are there, yeah, you want to jump in on that?
I'll sort of, I think this is one that we're, we've already started working on with the re, the reorganization of the, the realignment of the entire organization. I think, you know, I, if you, if we were to, I didn't write it. I don't know if anyone else did. I don't know if the manager snuck up there and wrote something. But I think that, you know, it does need to be highlighted that we are, if, if I was to write something, I would basically say, you know, you know, better, you know, coordination of departments. Yeah, definitely efficient, you know, focusing on outcomes, you know, rather than just the process only, you know. And, and there was some, I think there's some work we have to do in this, that we have to have some questions. Is the process working? Is the process there to prevent mistakes, or is it there to produce productivity and outcomes? Are we incentivizing, you know, you know, deliverables, or are we saying, hey, you have two weeks to do this and get it done? So those are, those are some of the areas I'd like to dig into. I know that's not here.
Yeah.
But I'm glad we have this as a goal, because I think while people may talk about safety and housing the most, their expectation is the government delivers.
Yeah. And, and Carl, I want to get to you, and then we'll come over to you.
Yeah, I think I mentioned this before, like, I think that when we talk about innovative and high performing organization, that's sort of like, to me, feels like internal to us, that's really important, and I think it should be part of this. But I think this should be framed in terms of how our residents see, like, the city of Durham. And so to me, it's like, it's like high quality city services. That, that's what residents think of. And we, to deliver that, then we need to have a high performing organization and all the kind of stuff you talked about. But like, it's like, it's city services that are delivered efficiently and effectively. So I'd, I'd reframe that, but I think.
Just reframe it, but the concept of having that as a goal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was just going to say, I was going to suggest innovative and efficient, because I think that that's the end, at the end of the day, I think that's the space that we hear a lot about.
Okay. I think, I think we're, I think we're aligned on this, but Chelsea, do you want to?
I just want to say that I, I had similar, I had similar goals that I put into that category, but also some of the things that I talked about was engagement. And I feel like it is interesting that we have engaged in a different goal, like that word, which I feel like is, I don't know, like engaged communities, I understand what we're talking about in that, in that one, but I was, I'm thinking that it more lives, that word more triggers the, like, internal processing sort of stuff that would go under the, whatever we're calling this one now, the high performing or efficient organization, just as a thought moving forward.
So would you, are you okay to leave this as a?
Yeah, like, I had community engagement as one of my main goals under this one, like, actual, yes. I mean, I, I think that's where it lives, right? Even though the other.
I think it lives, it lives in this goal.
Right. And I, what I'm saying is that I feel like it's like, that sort of feels like a big goal, and one that we talk about a lot on this council. And then it feels weird to have engaged as a title for a different goal.
Okay. Well, let's, let's, let's look at this goal here, because this is one where you all had, you know, and maybe Nate, and then we'll come over. Do you want to, you want to kick us off?
Just making sure, just making sure that the innovative isn't lost, just acknowledging, like, that's how sustainability is built in.
Oh, yeah.
Just knowing that the, the way we do water today is probably going to be very different than it is in the future, and we don't want to wait. We want to make sure that staff is thinking about that internally.
Yeah.
However, that looks externally, just making sure that innovative is not lost.
Okay. I think, Sheri, you wanted to clarify something.
Right. Just, I just wanted to clarify that our community engagement efforts are actually located in our connected, engaged, inclusive communities. I'm sorry, I was getting confused on which one we were talking about, the innovative and high performing, it has been more of an internal facing goal that, you know, we can look at making that more external. But the engagement efforts we have in our connected, it's that's a big broad goal.
I guess what I'm thinking of is when I'm thinking about us being a high performing organization, part of that is our, how we're reaching out to community. And I feel like that would maybe help us clarify what is going on in connected, engaged, and inclusive communities, which feels like no one knows what it is.
I see, you would put that in.
I would put community engagement under the high performing organization tab, because I think that is part of whether or not we are performing well, is whether or not we are responsive to people to contact us. I feel like engagement is a huge piece of that.
Okay. So let's go to this goal, connected, engaged, inclusive. Is this one you want to keep?
Can I just say one thing? Yeah. And I'm, I'm really learning from my colleagues on this, because I, I, I just never viewed being innovative and not mediocre as a strategy. It, it just seems to me that that should just be core values of, of, you know, of, of an organization. So I, I've struggled with that one. And because it's so inward, you know, I, I know our manager's excellent, we have an excellent team, but our, part of our strategy is to be non mediocre, like, to be high performing as opposed to, I just, I just never thought of that as a strategic kind of, I just kind of saw that as a core value. So whatever that's worth.
Would you, an organization that works well, an organization, I mean, is that?
Our strategy is to be, is to work well? That's a strategy.
No, I'm, I'm sort of, I'm just asking that question, so that, that does not.
That's my point. I, I don't, I don't, to say we're going to be excellent or non mediocre, again, for lack of a better term, I, I just, I just, I've just never put that in a strategic toolbox. That's just, you know, how are we going to address the future? We're going to be excellent. Okay.
So would this, this would be one that you would potentially pull off as a?
I, as, as a person who's forward facing and deals with the public, I've just struggled with, I see what it, what it represents for an internal, you know, our inward looking. But here's an opportunity to kind of craft.
An external facing.
Yeah, for outward facing. And to tell citizens that part of our strategy is, we're going to not be mediocre. Is this, you know, to me, it just seems like a missed opportunity.
Okay. Carl?
Yeah, I want to, I want to, I want to, will you be next in line?
Yeah, I'll just, I've got something fairly boring to say here, but I think there's some value in just having five buckets. We could, we could have like 10 buckets or 15 buckets of different goals, which we, I mean, we could do that. But I feel like these are decent buckets. We can work within them. We can create focused priority areas underneath each of these buckets. If we want to talk about housing, for example, we could just have a priority under built and natural environment for housing specifically, which I think does kind of balance integrating it within these goals and also focusing and showing the public, hey, this is a really important thing, and here's all of our initiatives under that. I think that there's value. I like the way all of these goals are phrased, other than the thriving and built environment, built, thriving and vibrant environment, which I'm, I'm, wanted to change to vibrant and built and natural environment. And then also, I would change the goal definition of that one to remove the word model, so that it just is, become a sustainable city offering widespread. Other than that, I personally, I'm happy with all of these buckets and the way they're, the way that they're written.
Yeah, okay.
So I think, I think you're, you're still.
That infrastructure is under that as well? Or is it still separate?
So.
For me, it would be under.
Yeah, let's move that, would be here, yeah, under that. Can I ask about the connected, engaged, inclusive communities? So Nate is comfortable with that as a goal, but Carl, you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, so I think, so, you know, and I think when we first talked about this with Sheri, I was like, do we, are we talking about new goals or not? So I, you know, I think there's no magic number on goals. I think, as you said, like, four to seven. So I think, I, I think this is part of our conversation here. I would say, I want to agree with Councilmember Cook. I think that the way you get to a high quality city services and delivery is through connected, engaged, that we engage our community. It's a big part of what we do in Durham. So to me, like, that supports the work of delivering high quality, efficient, innovative services. I would agree with nesting those there.
Oh, so you, I'm sorry, so you would move this under, within?
Yeah, yeah, that's what you said, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you're giving that a thumbs up? Yeah, what do you?
Actually, one other, if I could finish that comment. So, no, last one, try to think. Okay, I'll come back to it.
I would just say that I think that's partly why they were separated, is because one was outward and one was inward. It is, I think it's critically important to make sure that, as, with a staff of 2,600, that there is a goal that says we want you to be better. I don't think, I, I mean, I hear what Mayor Protem is saying, but I am mindful, like, that is where, like, the reason why they're specifically focused on employee retention and recruitment, like, that is making sure that we're focused inward as well as outward. And so I, I understood it to be separate for that very reason.
Okay.
That the engagement piece is the outward focus of, you know, what community wants to see and hear about, and.
Okay.
And how we're responsive. But the include, like, the inward facing, you know, making sure that we have the right people in the right places, and we're consistently working to improve all the time. Like, that's why professional development is important. That's why, like, those are the, like, I want it to be a high goal as a council, like, we're invested in our employees. We're invested in the workers that are here in the city, like, period, and.
You have a lot of nods happening in there.
I'm sorry, everything's over this.
So you're, yeah, so, and you're, Chelsea, you're?
But I, I, I appreciate Mayor Protem saying, like, we should, we definitely shouldn't start with a, you know, it's not like the mindset is that we're going to be mediocre. It's really like, I feel like, it's like the council saying, you guys matter. Like, in our, in our strategic vision of what happens in the next three years, you all who work here matter as well.
Yeah, I want to.
And I just want to go back to what I was saying before about, like, actually maybe using these, like, multi-tiered structures to, like, really help us guide. So like, if we combined those two things, we can have an outward facing and an inward facing subcategory within them, right? And in our, like, natural and built environment, we can have housing as its own thing, because I think everybody wants to have that. We can have infrastructure or another supportive, like, capital improvement as its own thing, and natural environment as its own thing. Like, we could actually utilize that structure that we've created to, like, help you actually walk through and, like, understand where we're going.
So you're?
I'm, so, two things. To me, and I said this before, and then I approached the connected, so I understand why we teased out this engaged community piece, because when we were initially drafting this, there was a massive reorientation in city government, ensuring that we were being equitable, we created equitable engagement blueprint, right? There was a lot of work around that. And now I feel like it has become our culture. And so it doesn't need to be at this high, high thing. It needs to be reflected in the strategic plan. But I think it goes into that, like, yeah, we are innovative, efficient, however we want to do it, we are that type of organization. And part of how we achieve that is by ensuring that we stay connected to our community. So I like the way that Councilmember Cook is framing things, like, people, folks don't, this is psychology at this point. Folks need very clear, very simple things that, and, and words, literally words, that they have seen before, that don't sound like weird government speak. They need to see a word and go, I have a psychological or relational attachment to that word because I have read it, I have seen it, I have interacted with it. So however we need to do those top goals, however we put that out in the community, that is how that needs to be done. So that then, and then, again, that piece where we're the staff are getting into the initiatives and things like that, that's, that's where y'all do your magic, right? But when we are in this real high level, I want folks to be able to really look and read a thing and, and, and not be like, well, what does that mean? Right? That's what I mean by squishy.
Yeah.
When you, when you put out a word efficient, people have some reaction to that.
So it does sound like we, this is something that we can work on the wording on, but that the, these would be nested together. Okay. But I guess, Mark.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with anything that's been said. I, I'm just, I'm just simply just trying to stay within the, the roadway of, of what a strategic plan is, of this particular undertaking. You know, it's interesting, I, the, a connected, engaged, inclusive community to me is, is, is a value statement. You can have a high functioning organization that does really well at whatever you tell it to do. I mean, you can, you can have a high performing organization that is not interested in equity, but they deliver efficiently on whatever it is you tell them to do. So I've never assumed that, I mean, you can name any organizations who are really good. The NRA is an efficient organization. You may not agree with their, their values, but they're high functioning. So I, I just never assumed that because we're good, that's necessarily, it doesn't have to be in pursuit of our values. So our values, the connected communities, inclusive communities, as a strategic goal, I mean, how we get there, I just see the, the innovative organization as, as process. It's not necessarily outcome that's reflective of our values. And I think that's important to, there's some people who are really good at what they do, and we hate what they do. But they're efficient and innovative at it.
Yeah, this is one where we're not quite, we're not quite there yet. I mean, I think a lot of, a lot of you are saying these, the staff could work on reworking this so that these ideas are sort of bucketed. I, I think that needs a little bit of work. I mean, the good news is that you, you are in agreement that these are things that are important, and that you want to be able to have some things that you'll focus on. I mean, where this leaves us is four goals. And then, and then with, and then with, obviously with some clear delineation within these goals about what you're going to be doing, that still needs a little more work. But let me just check this, you know, and see, I know this is a little messy at this point. What do you, what, you're good? Let me get like a, sort of a thumb sideways, or, like, in terms of at the strategic goal level. Nate, here. That's kind of up, but.
I would leave connected and engaged out.
You would? Okay, okay. Oh, all right, so that's, yeah.
When you say leave it out, you mean?
Separate, you would separate it as a?
As a dumb bucket?
Yeah. Yeah. Hmm. City manager, do you want to weigh in on now? That's why he has his job.
I think my strongest interest is if it, clarity around what it is, whether it's in or out is less important to me. I heard many council members during the exercise say, I really don't remember what this one is. I think Sheri Metcalf offered some comments individually around, this is kind of where housing used to live, but obviously that's kind of gone in a different direction. So I really don't have a preference. I just want to make sure council knows what they're getting. So I'll leave it there.
Yeah, I just want to say that the current priority areas under connected, engaged, inclusive communities are equitable engagement, housing affordability, and digital literacy and inclusion. And I feel like we have really talked about those in other buckets, or they could easily be combined with the functionality of our government bucket. That's just as it is right now. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if y'all have other things that you want to put in connected and engaged communities, but for me, I'm like, these priorities do not, don't require a standalone category as they are.
So I would, I would completely disagree, but I think that's specifically because the way in which this was formed, I mean, just in acknowledging, like, our community, unless you served on a board or a committee, you weren't advisory to the city in the same way. And when we implemented participatory budgeting or our community engagement strategy, that was the, that was the time for people who don't serve on boards, committees, or commissions to actually advise. And that's where the connected piece came in, documenting the history of neighborhoods. That's where the engaged and inclusive communities came in. And it was, it was not similar to the innovative and high-performing. So, I, I mean, I understand that the, the housing affordability came in through there with the task force, and, you know, like, these were all pieces that were living, or it was a way to bring outside into the city, into city government, that wasn't, like, always on. Like, you didn't have to serve for two years to have a say-so. You could just be, participate in more than a survey, but actually a process. Like the engage with the, with the comprehensive plan. That is where that whole, like, I think it, and as we go forward, what we're engaging around will shift and change, but the innovative and high-performing organization, in order for it to, to connect and be engaging, is different from what that meant for me.
So for you, you would, you would do what?
I would keep it separate. That's why I brought it back from all the way outside inside, like, you moved it way too far away.
Okay, okay. Yeah, this may, this may need a little more work before, we, I mean, we could continue.
I agree with Councilmember Freeman on the, the reason that we did that, and I just think that the, the culture of the organization has changed. I mean, that's where, that, you know, and you see that reflected in, in, in climate surveys from residents every year. If you look at, back at data from 2017 and 2018, and how people feel if they were connected and engaged with, there's, there's movement in those numbers. And so it's that same, it's, it's kind of like, and I, I said this when I was walking around, language access, when done well, is just embedded. You, you don't actually have it. Right. It's just in it. And so that, that, I, for me, it's an acknowledgement of, like, this is actually, the strategic plan was created X many years ago, and this is the improvement towards that goal. So, and, and it was a hard, you know, not, we're never done, but like, there's massive improvement in how we do it.
So we're, I mean, we're at, Carl, we're at a little, a bit of an impasse here in terms of deciding if you want to break these out or?
Yeah, I want to go back to what the, the manager said about, about clarity to staff. I think that's one of the biggest priorities here. And then I think to our, and like, and like, and clarity and sort of, as Councilmember Javier was saying, like, a way that people can understand what we're talking about. So I think there's no, it's not like if we have just four goals, that this is easier for y'all to manage than five goals. It's not like it's exponentially more complicated with five or six. So I think having enough goals to, to, like, easily communicate what our priorities are and how we want to, how we want the city manager and staff to execute this is really the critical piece. And so, yeah, to me, collapsing stuff together and make it forward doesn't really help me. And I think also, a critical piece is, again, as maybe Councilmember Javier was saying, is like, I think we're, with these goals, we're talking about ends. We're not talking about means to the ends. The means can come in with the sort of, like, nested below. And so to me, the engaged piece is absolutely an end or a means to getting to what we want in terms of high-quality, efficient delivery that delights our residents, right? So, so I think, I think having a, to me, the housing and built environment, I've said it before, housing is a thing, right? Climate change and environment is a separate thing, that those need to be called out as separate goals for this city.
So that, yeah, this is, yeah, I mean, I think, and I want to do a time check, because we've got a hard stop at 12. We, I mean, we have a lot of input. I mean, this is, a lot of this is about how you want to organize it, not about different end goals, I think, which is good. And this is something I think, working with staff, can come back to you on. We also asked you to list, what are the priorities? And it would be how, the, a question for you is, when you look at these sticky notes that are here, some of these, you have somewhere between five or seven or 10, the idea is that staff was going to take this out to the community and get community feedback on these potential priorities. We can, we can do an exercise where you can dot vote and try to narrow these down a little bit for the community, if we want to get some quick feedback on that. Or you can just take it all out to the community. And so I want to just check that with you.
Sounds like we need another meeting. I, I, I do want to get a, yeah, I just, yeah, before we even get there, I think we, I just don't, I do not feel that we got to a point of definition today.
Yeah.
And direction, that's one of my thumbs down.
Yeah.
And, and I, I don't know what this looks like, Mr. Manager, I don't know, we need to work on calendars to try and pull this back.
If it's council's desire to have another meeting, we could, we can, staff can look at options. Scheduling you guys recently has not been easy, but we will evaluate some alternatives and get you some options as quickly as possible. Sheri or Christine, I don't know if you guys want to comment on that, if you have additional thoughts.
As they're coming, let me also get a preference of the council as well.
Is it possible that we could do part of this?
At a work session?
Well, I was going to say part of it, not online, like, we could have, we could, like, do some interactive stuff, like, we did, we did our calls one-on-one with folks, that, like, we kind of know what the issues are, like, do we want to sort of structure this, where we tease out different things and have more goals and have, like, the priorities under there? Or do we want to, like, sort of have things that are more combined? I'm wondering if it's possible, if we could get, I mean, y'all, I know we're all over the place, but if we could get, like, at least some interaction with either these folks or with staff beforehand, so that when we come to our work session, we already, like, have some ideas about, like, things we want to talk about and narrow it down.
I'm open to that. I will say, I, I benefited by listening to the multiple perspectives around the table today, the dais, and I've actually, I, I enjoyed it, actually. It, it helped me out on, on my perspective with some of these.
And I don't want to take away that part. I just am wondering if we would be more effective if we did some parts of it, kind of like, on one-on-one basis, and then we came together, like, having done some, some larger prep work. But I don't know if that's something that.
We did spend a lot of time trying to determine, you know, goal versus priority, and, and they stepped in it. I, I don't know, maybe we could schedule some time with you guys, just to get a little more clarity on the expectation. Because we have not had a lot of time, what was evident today is, we have not had a lot of time to talk about these level, you know, topics. And it's, it's desperately needed, and we have an item on the agenda today at work session that I hope pass, which will open up more time in our work sessions, so that we could delve into the quality of the organization a bit more. But I, I, I am, I would like for us to convene again on this. I would be, if you guys are open to it as well, maybe we could, you know, schedule some time with you all, just, if needed, to just get a little more specificity around, you know, what we're trying to actually accomplish here and provide some clarity as we approach it. I, I'm just not settled on being able to just leave here and then the next step is going to the community tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, whatever, one, whatever the council decides, I don't know how helpful it would be, no offense, talking to you guys anymore, because, because we're going to wind up repeating what we said to you in this group anyway, so, so, I, you know, I'd prefer us to do it here. And so just to answer your last question, separating connected, engaged, inclusive communities and innovative and high-performing organization, I think that's how I started my comment. So I'm going to associate myself with those who, who said that, so.
Separating.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I, I think connecting, some of the things that go onto connected, engaged, inclusive communities, I think might be directly contrary to what line workers might think is efficient or high-performing.
Okay.
You know, we're the, we're not a business, you know, when you promote the general welfare, sometimes it's just not going to look efficient. Where the, unlike a business, part of our mission statement is, provide and promote the general welfare. And that's going to look, I think, sometimes contrary, so I would keep them separate.
Yeah, Carl, you add your hand up then.
Well, I assume if we, if we find some time to get together soon, and I, I wonder also whether, just throwing it out there, whether our next work session, I think, is October 4. Could we do this before the October 4 meeting, same thing, where we sort of spend a couple hours in the morning?
And I will say, keep in mind.
Night, yeah, yeah, night, yeah.
I will say, keep in mind that we are about to be addressing evaluations coming up as well, so keep that in mind with your calendars.
So anyway, so, I wonder if we can do it before the next work session? The other thing is, I imagine before then, you're probably going to take some of the stuff and synthesize this into some, maybe a couple different, like, options or directions to go.
That's what I was going to ask you for. There seems like there's two, it seems like, I think y'all have the data up there, it would be, I don't necessarily need another meeting, but I need that synthesized so that I can react to it. Because it could be that, that, you know, I've been one of the ones who's, like, collapsed some of this stuff, make it simpler. It could be that y'all do that, and I look at them, like, no, never mind, I hate it. And so that would be helpful before we go out to community.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, just as, as you wrap up, I mean, you, there, there's a lot of alignment, we're just trying to work through and organize this. And so, you know, it takes a little bit of time.